...2013, we're here at the City Hall at 116 West Bridge Street in Granbury, Texas, and we're going to call it to order here. At this time, I'd like to invite Pastor Glenn Ward, as the President of the Administrative Allowance, to lead us in our invocation.
Thank you. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege we have to call upon you, and we thank you for the privilege we have of prayer. Thank you, Lord, for our city government. We ask your blessings upon them with wisdom and guidance as they deliberate and make decisions. We ask for your leadership, Lord, and we pray that we will honor you. Thank you for our city, our area here, and we just thank you for the privilege we have to be here. We thank you for loving us, and we ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Follow me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In the name of the Constitution, the Constitution's flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
At this time, I'd like to read a letter that was sent to the City Hall here just recently. It's commending one of our employees here. It's from the Texas Municipal Clerk Certification Program. It says, "Dear Mayor, the City Secretary Marie D. Cross has completed her required professional education for recertification as Texas-registered municipal clerk. She was awarded her certificate on January 17, 2013, at the graduation luncheon held in conjunction with the Texas Municipal Clerk Selection Law Seminar in Irving, Texas. Their keynote speaker this year at the luncheon was Dr. Joyce Snay, Education Director of Texas Municipal Clerks Association Corp. As an officer of the city, Dee has made very professional and personal efforts to keep up to date at her legal and administrative duties. Achieving a recertification confirms that Dee is committed to her city. Certification and recertifications are neither easy or are they automatic. Original certifications require successful completion of approximately 200 hours of individual home study on a four-course curriculum and attendance at eight two-day professional development seminars, and the ratification requires 72 classroom hours of instruction, completion of three texts, and three comprehensive written papers." So I would like to, with the council and the city, would like to commend Dee for those achievements and those efforts that she has best of all possible public officials for the benefit of the citizens of Granbury. Thank you very much, Dee. At this time, we will, the city will have our open mic. For people that haven't been here at the city with the open mic, the City Council will provide an opportunity for citizens to present concerns or address issues that are not matters or consideration listed on the post-it meeting agenda during this open-mic period. The rules are that one person wishing to address the City Council must first register with the City Secretary and provide the following information: their name, their residence, their daytime telephone number, and the subject matter to be presented. Only one person may approach the microphone at any time, and only that person at the microphone, upon recognition by the presiding officer, will be allowed to speak for no more than three minutes unless otherwise directed by the preceding officer. The speakers must address their comments to the presiding officer rather than individual City Council members or staff. Speakers may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the City Secretary, who will make the information available to the City Council and the City Manager if requested. The Council will be allowed to receive input or information for the future agenda items, but will not be allowed to enter into any discussion. The Council shall allow the maximum of 30 minutes for the open mic. With that said, we've got some names up here. Let's go with... All right. Are they in order? The first speaker we've got today is Tom Baker. Tom?
Yeah. Hi, it's Tom Baker, 1002 West Pearl. And two things, it's really updates on Ricky and such. On February 23rd, which is the last Saturday of the month, this month, we will be doing a yard sale, sidewalk sale, garage sale, whatever, donated merchandise, and proceeds will go to him and his family. I saw him today at the hospital. He walked with a cane for the first time. He did 64 feet, which he was quite proud of, but it was quite a bit of effort to do it. But he is progressing and will be getting out of the hospital scheduled right now on Monday. So he's not back to normal yet, but he's rearing and can't wait to get out of the hospital and eager to get home again. There is a group that's getting together to retrofit his entryways, ramps, that type of thing, and it's really, I think it just started today, so there's not much information on that. But Becky Malden with the city is sort of spearheading it and will have information and directions, and I'm sure there'll be more than enough people to volunteer for it, but that will be coming up in the real near future. I hope it doesn't take as long to retrofit his house as it does other projects in town. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Our next speaker is Scott Young. Scott?
My name is Scott Young, 101 West Pearl, Granbury. Mayor Protim, City Manager, Council. In the last month, Willie &amp; Dick's Restaurant, just off the square, has closed. Prior to that, the Lakeside Grill closed, and now last week, Brazza's Smokehouse has been listed for sale. In addition to the restaurants, there are currently five empty storefronts with a sixth store closing the last day of February. Three years ago, the square was hampered with heavy construction of the courthouse. We have just now passed the one-year mark of the Opera House being closed. It is blatantly obvious how inaction is affecting many businesses in the heart of our town. The merchants and property owners of the square ask for no special treatment, no rebates or any special deals. Let's not drive away any more business or have any more business closures on the square. Accept the plans presented by this council-appointed committee and approve the investment in the Opera House for our square and for our town. Do it tonight; start tomorrow. Thank you.
That ends the open-mic session. We are now going to our consent agenda, the approval of the minutes of the council meeting of January 8, 2013, and the minutes of the council meeting of January 22, 2013. Council, you've all had a chance to look at these minutes and make any changes. Does anybody have any changes they want to make to these minutes? If not, I'll open it up for a vote to approve the minutes of the council meeting of January 8, 2013, and the minutes of January 22, 2013. Do I hear a motion?
Move.
Who, okay, I got a... Who made the movement here? Mickey Parsons? And the second by Laurel Perkel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Those minutes are approved. Moving to our deliberation agenda, the first item we have on there is a public hearing regarding a request of Don Rogers and Josiah Jones to replat property located at 200 and 202 Aqua Vista Drive, being lots 18 to 19, Block 1 of Laguna Vista Edition, as lots 18R into 19R, Block 1 of Laguna Vista Edition, and consider and approve the said plat. With that, we'll open the public hearing, and first we'll hear from Scott Sobchak.
There you go.
The application is a request to replat the two lots that you see bounded in red, and the purpose here is to basically shift the common property line around an encroachment for a carport that was built on the property. The application was signed by both property owners. They're amicable in this adjustment of the common property line. This is something that we've seen before in the past. It actually shifts a boundary dispute and is easily rectified by a replat application. As a part of the application, we have a variance to 31E and 410 to not approve Aqua Vista and Bonita Drive, 39 and 45 to not extend an 8-inch central ass-to-re main. Both pieces of property are served by a septic system, 39 and 46 to not upsize the existing 4-inch line served by the utility district to an 8-inch line as our ordinance requires, and a variance to 48 to not install a street light. Both the city staff and P&amp;Z recommend approval of the request as presented by the applicant.
Do we have anybody in the audience who wants to speak on this? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any remarks? If not, I'll entertain a motion to honor the request of Don Rogers and Josiah Jones to replat property located at 200 and 202 Aqua Vista Drive, being lots 18 to 19, Block 1 of Laguna Vista Edition, as lots 18R and 19R, Block 1 of Laguna Vista Edition, and consider and approve the said plat. Do I hear a motion?
Move.
There's no variance on that. And also, on that motion, do you want to consider and add the variances on this?
Make the request.
Okay. Mr. Allen has the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Couch. Any more comments from the council? If so, all in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. That request passes. The next item we have is a public hearing regarding a request of Norway Properties to replat Lot 1, Block 2 of the villages of Stone Brook Edition, as lots 1R1 and 1R2, Block 2 of the Village of Stone Brook Edition. This property is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Autumn Ridge Drive and Lauren Lane, and consider and approve the said plat. We'll now open that up for a public hearing. We'll hear from Scott Sobchak again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim. What's being requested by the applicant is to take this particular piece of property, which is recorded as one lot of record, and subdivide that into two proposed lots. You see the application here. We have one variance associated with this particular application. It's to 45 and 39 to not extend a sewer line along the approximate 45 feet along the east side of the property line. That area that's circled in yellow is that length of roadway where sewer's being requested to not extend it through the public frontage. You can see both lots will be served by a sewer line along Autumn Ridge. It's that dark line along Autumn Ridge on the south right-of-way line. One of the unique points of this particular piece of property is you can see the drainage channel just to the south of the property, and there's a point of constriction under that culvert that actually goes under Lauren Lane. Basically, it's been modeled, and our city engineers looked at it, and in the modeled situation where a 100-year flood event with build-out scenario of the entire basin, it can't handle the volume of water through that particular point. So it's a point of constriction and noted as such by the engineer that studied it, our city engineer that reviewed the study. So one thing that P&amp;Z did was to put a notation on this, knowing that the applicant is wanting to increase the density. They're recommending approval of the plat application, approval of the variance as submitted, but they denoted in their motion that the applicant, property owner, researched the building setback, drainage easements, and any potential detention requirements before increasing the density and filing this for record. This is not a conditional denial. They're recommending approval of it, but all they're saying is, hey, before you increase the density and put more impervious cover down there, we know there's a potential drainage problem, and we want you to look at it before you pull any permits first and go at your own initiative. Ultimately, where this is going is if the subdivider creates two lots out of this one and says, you know, there's not enough building space for me to put two buildings. I need to get a variance to the building setback requirements. I need to take a trip to the ZBA. The ZBA may see this as a self-imposed hardship. You're the one that increased the density. You're the one that's putting more impervious cover on the ground. It's a self-imposed hardship, and by the ZBA rules, they can't allow for a variance to be granted under a self-imposed or self-created hardship. So this is just a little, hey, take a look at the building footprint first before you file this for record. That's all it is. So, long story short, P&amp;Z is recommending approval of the variance and approval of the plat as submitted with a reading into the record that the developer researched the building footprint first to make sure he has adequate open space.
Thank you, Scott. Anybody from the audience want to speak on this one? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any questions?
Mayor, if I could speak.
Mr. Allen?
Scott, by doing two lots, are they going to have setbacks on each side of that lot in the middle?
They will. They're zoned light commercial. Light commercial requires two 20-foot building setbacks.
So actually, by doing two lots, they probably going to build a smaller building.
They may build a smaller building, but they could also put impervious cover to the property line, to the extent of the property line, they may have more impervious cover there. And with the two building footprints, they have more, they have, may have a little bit less area to design the detention area if it's needed. So that's where the engineer's going, is you're actually building smaller lots, maybe smaller building footprints, smaller lots. You still need parking and landscaping, so look at it on the front end before you file your plat for record.
Thank you.
Counsel, any more? With that, I'll entertain a motion to, regarding the request of Norman Properties replat Lot 1, Block 2 of the Village of Stone Brook Editions, of lots 1R1 and 1R2, Block 2 of the Village of Stone Brook Edition, and also with that, we'll consider and approve all the additional variances, and also enter into the motion, the applicant or owner will research the building setback, drainage easement, and any potential detention requirements prior to the increasing of the density. That way, he is convinced that he can develop two lots under the adopted codes. Do I hear a motion?
Move.
So, a motion by Mr. Parsons. I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Couch. Any more comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That passes. Our next item is a public hearing regarding a request of Norway Properties to preliminary plat a 29.949-acre tract of the Mylan County School Land Survey, abstract number 348, as lots 1 to 7, Block 1, and lots 1 to 2, Block 2, of the Meadows West Edition. This property is located south of the Peluxi Highway, FM Highway 51, on North Meadows Drive. Consider and approve the said preliminary plat. With that, I'll open a public hearing. Mr. Scott, check.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim. This is located, as you mentioned, just to the west of Autumn Ridge with the connection of Meadows Drive, and it has, if you note, the light blue aqua shading that denotes the plat boundary, it has a little panhandle area that touches onto Peluxi Road, Highway 51. It's about 60 feet, which adjoins 51. What's being proposed is to amend the preliminary plat. The previous one expired after about a year. To resuscitate this, and in looking at the preliminary plat, the developer has designs early on on a couple of lots that are fronting Meadows Drive, which would be north of the Autumn Ridge Extension and contiguous to Meadow Ridge. So it would be those two or three lots that are fronting Meadows north of the Autumn Ridge Extension. So we should see a final plat application, hopefully, in a few months regarding a few lots in that area. Along with the plat application, go back to the zoning map, show you. You can see that area that's actually north of the Autumn Ridge Extension is zoned light commercial, south is multifamily, and then that area in yellow is single-family residential. Again, he's focusing on that light commercial area to the north for a few lots, for office buildings. We have a variance request to 36A4 to not install commercial sidewalks along a section, that little panhandle section of Peluxi Road, and the variance will also extend to the allowance to use residential standards of a four-foot rather than a five-foot sidewalk in the light commercial zone. And what that does is basically move the sidewalk off the back of curb and create a park space, basically a five-foot park space. It just downsizes the sidewalk one foot. You'll have four-foot sidewalk instead of a five, but you'll have more park space between the back of curb. A variance is requested to 31 and 410 to not improve Peluxi Highway to an urban standard street, and a variance is requested to 48 to not install a street light along that 60-foot section of Peluxi Highway. This is an area, again, that's part of that same drainage basin that actually flows to the east. It goes to the previous lot that we saw that's constricted by the channel that flows just north of Miyako's and under State Highway 144. Again, we have a point of restriction. So our public improvement policy basically says regarding detention ponds that it doesn't openly promote detention ponds, but when there's inadequate outfall downstream, which is the case here, detention ponds may be considered. Our city engineers looked at the model, knows that there's a shortcoming, inadequate outfall downstream, and knows that detention ponds are needed in this area. The preliminary plat shows four detention ponds in that area to support this development. Our city engineers fine with it. So regarding our public improvement policy, there has to be this finding. It's in bold on your staff report, a statement accepting the alternative drainage system, which is the series of four detention ponds to support this development, as recommended by the engineer in a letter dated January 4, 2013, provided that the procedures and technical requirements of the same letter are met. So our city engineer's supporting the detention ponds that's being presented by the developer, the applicant, due to the fact that we got a constriction point downstream. It's much too costly to remedy that because it flows under 144. The only way to address the issues, at least in this particular development, is to detain it. Those engineers' plans will be submitted prior to the final plat for our engineer to review. With that, P&amp;Z and staff recommend approval of the variances, approval of the preliminary plat as presented, and with a reading of that statement as just mentioned.
So we'll be adding that statement in there to the developer's front?
Yes.
Has that flooded before there?
I don't know the history of that. Maybe Trace, Tony's shaking his head. I know we've had some drainage concerns. I know we've actually, when the developer of that particular area was developing it, we actually had to draw down on a bond to do some drainage channel work in that area to help improve it. So I know it's a troubled channel.
There are no such detentions in there right now, right? Well, we'll...
Barrett Hampton &amp; Brown actually did the initial study that Fries and Nichols reviewed, so he's pretty familiar with the drainage study.
I am Trace Strevey with Barrett Hampton &amp; Brown Engineers.
Go ahead and state your name and your address.
Trace Strevey with Barrett Hampton &amp; Brown Engineers. My business address is 6300 Ridgely Place, Fort Worth, 76116. I'll refer to this channel as the Landers Channel. That's what we've been calling it. And basically, what we've determined is that the way that it's built right now in the field barely has capacity for the existing runoff conditions of the drainage shed. So everything upstream of Meadows Drive is all agricultural land with just a few sporadic developments along 51, and then we did model in the existing single-family and some of the other mixed uses between Meadows and Highway 144, and the channel is barely adequate as is. So not just this development and the one heard previously on item number two, but also anything further west of Meadows Drive will all have to be detained at pre-development level so that we don't damage the properties in between Meadows and 144. But when I say it's barely adequate...
And there's a lot of available undeveloped area in that basin that, upstream, that will still need to accommodate this particular approach toward drainage management.
Correct. That's correct.
Counsel, any questions for the speaker?
I've got one.
Mr. Allen?
Actually.
Okay.
You know where the office buildings are out on 51 past the hospital? On the left-hand side?
Yeah, further on the south side of 51, but further west from this site.
Does their drainage run into the same Landry Ranch?
I believe it does, and I believe that that property is detained as well. That's the Peluxi?
Not on the agenda, but it's something they will look at for, because that's growing out there, you know, in the future.
Is that the Peluxi office park? Yeah, that area was detained as well.
I can tell you one plat that actually detained on the south side of the property for slow release into this basin as well.
Yeah, I've seen that. But you think the, you think the four will do it?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Whether, I mean, in a perfect world, we'd be building one big pond, but in this situation with our split zoning, single-family, multifamily, and then two different business parks, there's just no way that all those groups can cooperate to maintain one basin. So the four basins, we can get the same effect by building them in series. Certainly.
Counsel, any more? Thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any more remarks? With that, I'll entertain a motion regarding the request of Norman's Property to preliminary plat a 29.949-acre tract of the Mylan County School Land Survey, abstract number 348, as lots 127, Block 1, and lots 122, Block 2, of Meadows West Edition, and also all the variances and entering in the, accepting the alternate drainage system, series of detention ponds, as recommended by the city engineer in a letter dated January 4, 2013, provided that the peculiar and the technical requirements outlined in the same January 4, 2013 letter to the city from the city engineer are applied. Do I hear a motion?
Move.
Got a motion from Mr. Allen? Do I hear a second? I'll second it. Counsel, any more comments with that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That passes. That moves us to our next item to discuss the status of the Opera House redevelopment project and consider and approve any recommendations from the Opera House Redevelopment Committee. With that, I'll call on Wayne McKeefen, or Chairman on that board. Okay.
Can I get someone to come up and, there it is. Someone's controlling that. Okay, the committee has had a meeting, has been meeting. We've met several times, and our purpose was to try and identify where we wanted to go with the footprint of the Opera House and make sure we had a functional theater. That was the purpose. Bill Scott's been involved in that as well, the construction company, and we have, and the committee wanted to bring forward a footprint at this point, that the committee was all in agreement that it met the full definition of a functional theater, and that would be... All the committee members seemed to be happy with this and wanted to come forward and seek some more direction from the council in terms of where we go from here. So I'd like to turn it over first to Bill Scott and let him walk through the changes that we've come up with for both the first, second, and third floors. Can you walk through us real quick what those changes are?
Generally, yes, sir. Bill Scott, 908 South Savannah 4, Texas 76111. Floor plans on the screen have been...
Hey, Bill, can you point your mic up a little bit or something so they can hear...
The drawings, can you hear me okay?
Get shorter.
Yeah. The drawings have been modified to accommodate the desires and requests of the subcommittee we're all assigned to. Generally, the building grew a little bit to the east, 15 feet or so. The stage has been modified for an eight-foot floor-to-floor underground basement section with an accessible stair. The back stage finish-out area has grown approximately 1,300 square feet significantly with the finish-outs. There's a rehearsal space above that space. The theater space per se seating-wise has not changed very drastically. The big changes are in the underground portion of the stage and the backstage finish-out. Front lobby space has been modified to accommodate the requested changes by the subcommittee. The second floor and third floor have been modified to, along the same way. The balconies have been enlarged a little bit. The third floor has been modified to accommodate the operations of the theater requests. There's a full-service elevator installed that will go from ground floor to third floor. Generally, that's it in a nutshell. We've changed the skin to structural, backstage structure of the building has been modified from a, basically a CMU split-face veneer to a structural... from a, basically a CMU split-face veneer to a structural steel system with a split-face veneer that will increase the efficiency of the insulation in the building about threefold, and it reduces costs, and we believe it will expedite the schedule. So we've made several modifications, all based on our subcommittee directives, and there before you, we hope it will be the basis of what we will call the approved floor plan.
If you'll move to the reconcile page. The changes that he just mentioned have been itemized in a schedule where you give a guaranteed maximum price, basically worksheet, and it reconciles the changes from the 2.2 million to the current estimated cost that you have brought forth to the committee of around $3 million. It breaks it out primarily between components of the master, I mean, the main backstage buildout is $277,000. The pit is $198,000, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and so, but as you see, the elevator is $60,000. So there's, all components are broken out there, and so what we wanted to bring forth to the council, first of all, is to show what the total universe is at this point, where the most ardent, I think, supporters feel that this is a functional theater. That's the outside barrier of $3 million, and reconcile it between the 2.2 and the $3 million, and open it up for discussion as to how you think, the council thinks we should proceed at this point. I'd like to turn it up to Gary. Would you like to have some comment on that?
We began this new drawing back in late November, and so we've produced a floor plan that I believe meets all needs, not just today, but mainly in the future. You know, our population will double over the next 10 to 15 years. So we're building a theater for the future. So I'd like everyone to keep that in mind as we look at these numbers. Now, when it comes to the additional cost, what I'm in favor of is going ahead with the drawings and the bid process in order for us to come up with a real number. You know, I don't want to make the same mistake we did in the previous, in the previous design, where we're trying to make decisions based on estimates and not bids. And so in order for us to make any decisions, I think we need bids, and in hopes that that number will come down. And so that's kind of my position on this, and...
Why don't we just go down the line here, because I know everybody's got a little bit to say on this. Mr. Parsons, you want to, you got any comments on the Opera House?
Thanks, Mayor, for the time. Yeah, first of all, I thank the committee for working on this. I think we're very diligent and worked hard on it. We had Andrew Barris and Kent Watts, both experts in this business, helping us design this. They are well aware of what's required of an Opera House to operate functionally from a theater standpoint. Those of us that have lived here for a while know exactly how important the Opera House is to our history and to our city, and made us a substantial recognition around the world. Everywhere you went, you found people that, oh, you're from Granbury, oh, the Opera House. And I'm excited about the possibility of building this new facility that should last 75 years or more with updates, and hopefully we'll be able to, when we're in an airport in Bangkok, someone comes up and says where you're from, you say Granbury, and they'll be able to say, oh, I love the Opera House there. So I appreciate the committee and all the hard work that went in there. But what the floor plan that you're seeing does is it takes care of everything that we've torn down. In other words, we've replaced the green room and the rehearsal hall, which we had in the Quonset Hut. We've replaced the dressing rooms. You have to have dressing rooms for your actors. You have to have a costume shop. This facility has a costume shop. You have to have a scene shop. This new facility has a scene shop. The new facility has a pit. Oh, that's right, the old Opera House had a pit too. How about that? Storage, we need lots of storage space. This has some storage potentially in the basement, and it also has a box office, which our old Opera House had. But new items in this Opera House are ADA compliance. You don't know how hard, when you get into a building that's 50 by 100, and you're trying to put three or four, 500 seats in there, how difficult it is to comply with ADA requirements. Every time you add another seat, you add a toilet. Every time you add another seat, you add something else. So the ADA compliance was one hard issue for us to address, and this facility will do that. It has a beautiful design for the grand stairs. When you come into the building, there will be two beautiful stairs. We'll still have inadequate mingling space in the front like we've had in our old facility, but at least we'll have the beautiful stairs leading up to an upstairs landing that will look out over the courthouse view. We'll also have a concession stand in that upper area for people to use. There will also be a concession stand in the bottom part or in the entrance lobby. This one will have an elevator, an ADA requirement. We went ahead and made the ADA requirement work so it takes equipment and people up to the third floor, which will be our mechanical rooms or our audiovisual and lighting control rooms for the productions. This theater also have modern theater riggings, acoustics, and lighting. We'll have fly-in capabilities, and through the basement floor, we'll be able to have lift capabilities. You've been to recent shows, you know how wonderful and how effective those acts of theater are. We're looking forward to having nice appointments in our new Opera House. It should be winning awards because we're going to have some wonderful appointments. We're hoping that we can get the community to participate within this. This should have a 50 to 75-year life. When you look at the Opera House, if they have about 285 seats, I think is which this Opera House will have, and you put on four shows per weekend, and you do that 50 times a year, we'll be putting 57,000 people on the square. If we go to five performances per week for that 50 weeks, we'll be putting 71,250 people on the square. In the old days, the Opera House used to have, what, seven shows, one Thursday, two Friday, two Saturday, one Sunday? So I didn't do the calculation for seven shows, but that's a bunch of folks on the squares, and perhaps that would be economic development that we need the square to address the problems that Scott Young talked about. I'm in favor of completing the building under this schematic. I think it's a wonderful plan, and I'm glad to have been a part of drafting it up.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Mr. Allen?
Well, I agree, Mickey, and I want to thank you and everybody else that was on that committee. I was shocked when I seen $3 million, I'll be honest with you. I used to live in Virginia, from Texas, but I lived up there. We used to go to, up to Atlantic City, New Jersey, a place called Tausma Hall, British Casino up there. And I'd pay more money to go see, just to stay in that casino, to say I stayed there. So I'm hoping that our price is not out of range here, that our tickets got to be expensive that people can afford them, and I hope that Andrew can afford the difference of a million dollars in price on the lease. And I think it's a great deal, a great idea. Gary had mentioned about maybe getting some extra money donated to us to offset the $3 million. I did? I think you said earlier. Yes, maybe you didn't.
Go with it, Gary. Go with it, Gary, go with it.
No, I think, can I say, we've got something with it?
Yeah, go ahead.
A part of this that I don't think we had in the other one is getting the community involved and get them participating in this, and I think this is a real opportunity to do that. So I don't really see it as necessarily a hardship, but an opportunity to possibly go out and raise some funds to be sure that we have everything that we want in this theater.
Okay. What I'm saying is, I agree, I think it's great. I'm like Scott Young, do it tonight, get started tomorrow, Bill. But I just want the taxpayers to know that, you know, this is a lot of money, a lot more than we anticipated. My fact, I could pull a minutes up, but we made the motion, it was that we would stay in budget and get it done quicker and cheaper. My fact, one of the, I'm not going to call them names because I'd be wrong now, but one of the guys told us up here that he felt like we should went to 1.7. Well, now it's $3 million. We had a bond for 1.2, we voted for 2.2, and now we're at 3. So I'm willing to do it, but if the light bills go up, I don't want to hear no grapping, okay? Thank you. And I want to see the business on the square stay open on weekends.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Laurel?
I'm probably the oldest one here as far as being in Granbury, and I will say that we need it. And the reason we need it, we need something to bring people into town, because once they get here, we can get something, you know, for them. The Opera House has always been the, I guess you'd say, the focal point of the square. And yes, it's going to cost, but if I ask how many of you here, up here and also in the audience, actually bought a chair in the old Opera House? I would imagine I will see at least four or five hands go up. Okay, this is something, this is something they used to have, I'll talk about that in a second, but the oleo they used to have on the old Opera House. It took me five years when I became an agent over here to get on that oleo. I mean, you had to fight to get your name up there because that was, quote, "the place to advertise" in Granbury. Everybody came to Granbury, went to the Opera House, and they saw your name up there, and they started thinking about what you do. Well, I saw that at the Opera House. We need to do that. We need to, also, the chairs, they're redoing the chairs now. Again, like I said, a lot of us have names on those chairs. There's ways to raise money, and the thing is, if people are going to benefit of it, why can't they share a little bit of the cost? Now, the people, the taxpayers aren't going to have to pay all of this because we're going to have increased sales tax and stuff like this, but folks, you cannot think about what it's going to look like tomorrow. You have to think of what will it look like in 50 years? Because if you don't plan ahead, folks, we're going to get bypassed. And so, and with the push I'm going to push again, I'll get on my Bailey wig about the water, we're going to get, if we have water in the future, we're going to have a town. But to keep that town, we need something to keep them. And the Opera House, in my opinion, is the way to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Laurel. Well, counsel, we've heard from everybody but myself here, and I agree that I sit on that council, I sit on that committee, and this is, this is a, this is a successful Opera House plan. It is usable, it is the one that's to be, be able to house about any act we bring into it, I believe, just from listening to the experts on that. And it is, it was a disappointment that we, that our dollar amount went up so high, but as you hear from the council here, it looks like we're trying to get, we want as much involvement out of the community as we can get to help us support this thing, to help us make this thing get off and rolling. And I think it'll be, and I, for one, are ready for Bill Scott to do something out there to start making production in this thing and start building us an Opera House that is the piece of the puzzle that we are missing here in Granbury, Texas. So hopefully, with that said, we can get a motion that will get this thing, get this thing off and rolling. Well, I think what we do here is, I think, I think Mr. Couch has come up with a motion here that will be, will relax the idea of what we want and also to give us some leadway on some of the dollar amount there. So Gary, do you want to make a motion on this?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to have Mr. Scott move forward with drawings and bids on the plan that has been approved by the committee.
I hear a second?
Aye.
We have a motion by Mr. Couch and a second by, I'll give that to Mr. Parsons down there. Any more comments from the council?
How quick can we get started? Not just on bids?
Soon as you vote.
I'm like Laurel, we want to see shovels, dirt. When's that going to happen?
Well, we've got to get a, we've got to complete the design as fast as possible. It starts about five minutes after I walk out the door.
You mean, the designs are not done?
No, we got it, we're getting an approved floor plan, which cuts loose all engineers, architects, the whole community. I think it's a big deal.
Is that the deal, you said three to four weeks?
Yes, sir.
So we still be open by Thanksgiving, right? We're going to start the same thing that last year?
We'll try, we'll try and immediately get a design schedule presented to you guys and let you know exactly when and what is going to happen.
This person, all business, not just downtown, it's every person.
Yeah, it starts with an approved floor plan, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Bill, is there anything you need from the council to expedite this thing, to be clear about?
We need to vote on it. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That does pass. Congratulations, Bill.
Well done!
That's a hard act to follow there.
Let's go home.
Our next item here, we're going to consider and award a contract for the emergency replacement of a 250-foot self-supporting tower that provides antenna mounting access to the Granbury Police Radio Repeater and is considered critical city infrastructure, providing for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Granbury. With that, I'm going to have our IT person, Tony, talk on that.
On the 24th of January, during a routine trip to the cemetery tower, it was noted that the tower appeared to be listing and buckling on two sides. After a visit by myself and my department, it was worse than what the pictures had depicted. So I contacted Allstate Towers, who has inspection teams that normally do inspections on our towers. They deployed an emergency team to come evaluate the tower. On the 25th, they came out, they did measurements and pictures, sent them back to the engineers back in Kentucky, and they issued us a letter telling us that we needed to do an emergency dismantling because the tower was in imminent danger of collapse. On the 26th, that Saturday, we deployed two cranes and we did an emergency dismantling of the tower, got all the assets off of it and got it down safely, and then had it shipped off. That tower is the backup police repeater. The primary repeater is on the east tower, out on the east water tower. There's a 250-foot self-supporting tower out there. That's where the backup police, or the primary police repeater is. When that repeater goes down, for whatever reason, we've had it go down three times over the last year, 18 months, due to lightning strikes, the backup repeater kicks in and becomes the primary repeater. With that primary repeater down, we have no backup currently if the east tower goes down. The police will be off the air. So I talked to our purchasing manager, Alvin Scott, asked him, how do we go about doing an emergency replacement? That's why this item is on the agenda as an emergency replacement. I am trying to keep from having to go through a formal bid process that would take us six to eight weeks between RFP and posting of the bids in the paper. I will tell you that I did go get competitive bids from two companies. One of the companies was the company that built the one out at the east tower, that's Sabre Towers, and I got a bid from Allstate Towers. I also compared more than one type of tower. I had them provide bids for 190-foot. The one that we took down was 165 feet. I had them bid a 190-foot tower, self-supporting, and a 250-foot self-supporting. The reason I proposed the 250-foot was the tower that was at the cemetery was 165 feet, and when the backup repeater was used, there are dead spots on the south side of the city limits where the police patrol and the radios do not work. That's why when we built the 250-foot out on the east side, it was made the primary repeater because it was tall enough not to have any dead spots. So my proposal was, is 190-foot was the standard self-supporting that you can purchase now, and I also proposed a 250-foot with the idea that if we're going to build it, let's build it right so that it doesn't have dead spots. I also bid, or got quotes for bids for both new and used. quotes for bids for both new and used, because you can buy used towers. The bid that I presented to Wayne, I gave him a spreadsheet with all the bids, my recommendation to him was to go with the 250-foot used tower. It is five years old. It was just dismantled in West Monroe, Louisiana. It was deployed by one of the top three cellular companies, but had never had any assets mounted to it. They didn't actually use it. It was built and had been sitting there for five years with nothing on it. They are giving us the same warranty on that tower as they would the new one. It would have a new foundation and a new building at the base. The diesel generator is sitting out there on the pad waiting for the tower to be built and the building to be placed, so that it would have emergency backup power, just like the one on the east side. I believe the total on the, I was trying to remember, did I include the totals in the package? I think it was like 100 and...
143,000.
143,000, I think, was the total. That includes the tower, the foundation, the building, the foundation for the building, and replacement LMR 900 cable for the police radio.
Man, that's a good deal. They build Opera Houses, too?
Well, I will tell you, Wayne did give me congratulations on getting it
That was a good deal.
tore down in two days, so...
Right. Yeah, just so you know, I thought the crew did a really good job, because once we were aware of it, we had it down by Sunday after we found out on Friday, I guess it was.
Right.
And it was an emergency situation. A crew came in with cranes to take it down, and that storm Monday or Tuesday night could have put it at real risk to tumble and so to come down. And so, we were really glad that they got in and got that down.
Council, any questions for Tony?
Well, I'm the only ones ever to ask questions. I need help here. Can I speak, Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, sir. Tony, did you price the new one, what it would cost compared to that?
Yes, sir, we did. We did price the new ones. With the used one, I believe we're saving $27,000.
Okay, is the generator new or is it used?
The generator, we've had the generator. It's brand new. We're waiting to hook it up.
Okay.
The reason we had not hooked the generator up at this point is because the building that is there now is so dilapidated. I wasn't gonna hook it up until next budget year when I was gonna propose a new building to be put there. It's too dilapidated now to hook that up to the generator.
Thank you.
I think the key is, too, we have the same warranty on this one we would have with a new one.
We do.
So, let's go ahead and save the money.
What is the warranty?
Five years on the warranty.
Any more questions, council? With that, I'll entertain a motion to consider and award a contract for the emergency replacement of a 250-foot self-supporting tower that provides for the health and safety and the welfare of the citizens of Granbury. Do I hear a motion? Hear a motion by Mr. Parsons? Hear a second? I'll second it. Any more statements? Any more talk?
What is the normal amount, what's the amount the contingency?
Hundred, hundred thousand.
I will point out one other thing. I have also, as soon as I knew I was taking the tower down, I went ahead and started the paperwork with the FAA and the FCC. So that has already started. We should have FAA study approval this week. We also have, I have processed the paperwork with TML with insurance for the failure of the tower. We're waiting for that now. So we also have filed for an insurance claim on this, so there should be coming, something coming back from the insurance on that tower.
Now, that tower was 15 years old and a smaller tower, so we will not be reimbursed in total, but
Right.
we're hoping for as much as $50,000 on the insurance, because that's probably what it was worth. They wouldn't insure it for more because it was an old tower that was...
And Mitch is real happy with it, right? So council, we have a, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Tony. Our next agenda item is to consider and adopt a resolution for the hanger lease purchase agreement with First National Bank of Granbury. With that, will Ms. Ava Gregory talk?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna let you talk, Wayne.
I agree.
Mayor Fortham, City Manager, Council, this resolution is just approving the hanger lease purchase agreement. This financing bid was awarded to First National Bank back in November 27, 2012, for the storage hanger and the maintenance hanger at the terms of 15 years at 3.35%. And the financing institution, First National Bank, is just requesting a formal resolution to be passed at this point.
Thank you. Council, any questions? With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution for the hanger lease purchase agreement with First National Bank of Granbury. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Parsons, second by Laurel Perkel. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Adoption passed. We had to stay up there. We've got another consider and adopt a resolution for a hanger lease purchase agreement with Community Bank of Granbury. Would you go ahead and...
It is the same situation. Community Bank was awarded the refinance of our tea hanger complex. The terms were eight years at 3% back in November 2012, and we are doing the same thing, passing this formal resolution to approve the lease purchase agreement.
Thank you, Ava. Council, any questions?
Like, one question. What's the payout on these, as far as the rental, the amount we get for renting them to paying off the debt? Do you have any idea?
Well, I can answer that. On the one that is not Texas area evac, the one we're gonna have four planes, we're gonna make money on that. The profit revenue is gonna be close to 3,000 a month, and the, and the payment's around 12,000 to 1,300, if I remember.
I thought this is, this is a good deal.
This is a good deal. Now, the other, the other one is we made an agreement where they would pay the amount of the cost of the hanger, okay, for the Texas area evac. Now, I will say this, the fact that we're refinancing this and going from about, what, 6% of interest on the initial?
6.1.
6.1 to 3.3. We're gonna save $80,000 over the next eight years. So it's a real good refinance for us, and we're gonna save money for the taxpayer.
Wayne, is, is there rent the same? Or is it, I mean, was the back where it was, six and a half, or even lower than rent for airback?
Well, these are new, these are new hangers.
It's not, it's not airback you're financing?
No, we had already, we'd already looked at the proposed...
We're headed down.
Yeah, we already had that down. We're gonna be, they're gonna pay what we pay.
Yeah.
Council, I'll entertain a motion to, to adopt the resolution of the hanger lease purchase agreement with Community Bank of Granbury. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Perkel has made a motion. I'll second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Thank you. Our next item is discuss and consider an ordinance amending Article 2.01 and 2.05 of the City of Granbury Code of Ordinance to clarify that a dog not on a leash or lead but at the city's designated dog park shall not be deemed to be an animal at large. I'll just, I'll just simply say that it's important that we amend our ordinance so that we are not, so that anyone at our dog park is not violating our ordinance. And that protects us legally of having a dog running loose without a leash in our dog park. Would you like to speak on that, at all, Stuart?
When is, when is Granbury Park gonna open?
We're looking for late April.
All, all, I'll, just to clarify what the city manager has said, that this ordinance simply amends the definition of animal at large to provide for, the leash law will still be in effect except for dogs that are in cars or at the park. And then the other thing is to, 2.05, to add an affirmative defense, that if you're written ticket for a dog at large, but your dog is at the park and you're there watching them, then you, then that's an affirmative defense for you not to get, pay that ticket. So it just clarifies that when you bring your dogs to the dog park, as long as you follow the rules of the dog park, you don't have to have a license.
So there's no liability if two dogs get in a fight at the dog park?
Well, the city has immunity, but there's also a recreational use statute that protects the city. If a person is in a park and they're there for recreational purposes, which going to the dog park would be with your dog. In fact, walking dogs is specifically listed in the recreational use as such a use, then the city would be immune. So, no, the city has immunity if a dog bites people or another dog.
Council, any more questions? With that, we will, I will entertain a motion to amending Article 2.01 and 2.05 of the City of Granbury Code of Ordinance to clarify that a dog not on a leash or led by the city's designated dog park, or on a lead, but that the city's designated dog park shall not be deemed to be an animal at large. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Allen has a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Couch. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That passes. Next item on the agenda is to consider and approve an ordinance increasing the speed limit in certain sections of State Highway 144 based on the recommendation from the Texas Department of Transportation. And Ava Clarks is not here tonight, so Wayne, you wanna bring us up to date on that one?
Well, yes. It has been recommended to us by the, by Texas DOT that we increase the speed limit on 144 running from Pearl Street out to, what's the street where it ends at the, at the 35? I forget. Mitch? South Meadows. And then further out, it will go to 45 miles an hour.
What do you think?
30. So it's, we're gonna increase the speed limit based on the recommendation of Texas DOT.
And that's for approximately how many miles?
I think it's about three, four, about four miles, if I remember right. Come on up to the mic, so we can hear.
The only stretch of roadway that's really changed, where the speed limit's changing is at Morgan and Pearl. It's 30 miles an hour there on Morgan Street, and it's 30 miles an hour there all the way until you get almost to the overpass of 377, and that's when it turns 35. So really, the only place that it's changing is from Pearl Street to just before you get to the overpass where it turns 35. It'll just all be 35 all the way out to just past South Meadows, and then it'll turn into 45. That's, that's basically all they're changing is that one little stretch.
Is that gonna hurt our golf court?
Well, there's, there's no car, golf courts on there.
No carts are allowed on that roadway anyway, Tony.
I'm sorry, man.
We'll work on that. Thank you, Mitch. Council, any more questions? With that, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the increased, the speed limit in certain sections of State Highway 144 based on the recommendation from the Texas DOT, Texas Department of Transportation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Couch, a second by Laurel Perkel. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. Item number, moving down to item number 10, is to consider and approve a partial amendment to Article 3, Use of Leased Premises for the Lease with the Lodge on, on Lake Granbury.
Mayor, I'm, I'm, I have a conflict, so I'll be stepping down on this one.
Okay. Note that, Councilman Couch, will be stepping down on this one? Stuart, you wanna go ahead and enlighten us on what this is all about?
Sure. Back in 1982, the City of Granbury signed a lease agreement with the previous owners of the Lodge on Lake Granbury. That's been in existence since 82. It's been amended several times through the course of, you know, time. Originally in 1982, the intention of the lease was to allow for a water recreation. A pool and tennis courts were gonna be there. But it also contained a provision that said that the, the less, the less see, the lodge could build parking spaces. Well, now, with the new renovations over there, they have a new pool in place, and that leased property is being used for parking. So after a meeting between the city manager and Mr. Sobcek, myself, and Mr. Couch, and Mr. Tony Mobley, with the homeowner association out there, it was decided that we really need to amend the lease to reflect what they're using the property for, which is parking, since they're not gonna use it for a pool anymore. So the only thing that we're asking the council to do tonight is to just amend partially that, the lease, just to amend Article 3 to allow the, to read that the property be used for parking, not for water recreation. And just as a caveat, it has been, I wanted to make the council aware of, and it's in your staff report, of the possible erection of carports there. But all I'm gonna say on that at this point is that's in negotiation at some point in the future. That'll go through P&amp;Z and council, but that's not up for discussion. And I just wanted to make you aware of that the city may be filing that application for future consideration. The only thing you need to consider tonight, and in fact, as posted, the only thing you can consider under the Open Meetings Act, is the, that partial amendment of the lease to, to read the property be used for parking.
Thank you, Council.
You're saying parking, you're talking about where the swimming pool was, or talking about the old lot?
The lease, the lease premises runs from where the building is to the, to the east. And the, the other part of that was, was subject to a release of, a release of lease back in 2005, 2006, and that's public beach parking now.
So council, I think what I'm reading in this, we have a, an old lease or an amendment that actually has a tennis court and a swimming pool on it, which is no longer existing there. So we wanna, to amend this Article 3 to where it actually states that it's nothing but merely a parking lot for the leasing lease owners to, to do business with. Is there any questions on that? Okay, at this time, I'll consider and approve, consider a motion to approve the partial amendment to Article 3, Use of the Leased Premises of the lease with the Lodge of Lake Granbury. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion from Mr. Parsons. Hear a second? Second by Mr. Perkel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That lease agreement passed. Mr. Couch, you can resume your duties. Our next item we consider is approve the request to close one block of Crockett Street from 6:00 PM on Friday, February 22, 2013, through 6:00, 6:00 PM on Saturday, February 23, 2013, for the community yard sale benefiting the mayor, Ricky Pratt, and family. You want Shannon to talk on that, or the...
I mean, it's not, you want to...
Well, I didn't know if Mitch needed to talk on that either. Ms. Snyder?
This is the request of several citizens coming forward. They filed their due process and due permit for the street closure. So they're requesting, as it, as it states, the one block of Crockett Street from 6:00 PM on Friday through the following day, for Saturday, for setup and to continue on with the community yard sale.
Are they gonna utilize the street? They're just gonna be right out in the street then, right?
Right, right. As a normal, normal street closure, yes, sir, within Crockett. And, you know, if they need to use right inside the courthouse, that's when we'll take that permit forward to the judge.
Do we have any details on when they're accepting items and some of the information as relates to the overall project, how that's working?
From my understanding, the items will be collected over at Celebration Hall, right by Granbury Live, I believe, up until February 20. So items will be collected for that, during that time.
Thank you.
Yes, starting.
Your official invite.
So it's Saturday, February 23, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and donations of items accepted at Celebration Hall starting at February 20. Will there be hours like that, 8 to 3, at Celebration Hall on those two days, three days? As needed, okay. But that's on the 20th. I'm talking about on the 20th.
On the 22nd.
Okay, so people can, so it will be open during the day to come, accept gifts during that period of time. And then we have some phone numbers here. Are these flyers going up around the town, or? Okay, yeah. Thanks. I appreciate your hard work and efforts on this, really do.
On the, what are the provisions for weather? Or am I misunderstanding that? Are we going to have it outside?
From my understanding, it will be all out... From my understanding, it will be all outside, all on Crockett Street. Our department is not specifically coordinating that, but working with the, the permit holder to help get the word out pending council approval tonight.
Mayor, I got a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
Thanks, sir. I tell ya, I'm for this, but it's kinda like whenever Nan and I was talking about the auction, we thought about going for the city to see if we'd get the conference center, and then we got thinking, if we did that, everybody had a benefit, me trying to get the conference center, so I didn't wanna start something or have a conflict here with the city. My concerns is, I didn't know it was outside time, I really and truly didn't. Are we, well, we're closing the roads down, we're gonna be using it, and, I mean, please, please, I mean, I, I think we all should help Rick, I really and truly do, and his family. But I don't wanna sit here and, and say that next month, somebody else comes up with a, with a family program or something, that they need money, and we gotta close the roads, the streets down. Maybe I'm looking at it wrong, but how we, how do we get, how do we get around this, Stuart?
Well, it's, it's a city street, so you have the discretion, as a council, to close it whenever you want to. Kind of case-by-case basis, you listen to the applicant, you deliberate on it, and you make your decision on a case-by-case basis.
I mean, I think it's a great idea, and I just don't want every month, somebody coming up here, and then we, first one we turn down, we're gonna have a problem. You know? I did not know it was, it was gonna be closed.
Any more discussion from the council? Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
You might wanna stay up there, I think you got one more coming up. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request to close one block of Crockett Street from 6:00 PM on Friday, February 22, 2013, through 6:00 PM on Saturday, February 23, 2013, for the community yard sale benefiting the mayor, Ricky Pratt. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr....
Mickey made the motion.
Oh, Mickey made the motion? And who seconded that, Allen? Mr. Allen. We got a first and a second here, any more comments? With that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. Next one is to consider and approve the closure of streets for the General Granberry Birthday Celebration and Parade as follows. Close the section of Bridge and Crockett Street from 5:00 PM on Friday, March 15, 2013, through 6:00 PM on Sunday, March 17, 2013, and close sections of Bridge, Crockett, and Pearl from 11:45 AM to 12:45 PM on Saturday, March 16, 2013. Shannon, you wanna, where'd she go? Shannon, you, oh, there you are.
Yes, sir, this is the annual street closure for General Granberry Birthday Celebration. The first portion of the agenda item is to ensure that we have enough time for the vendor move-in, so as normal for normal festivals, coming in at 5:00 PM Friday and going through 6:00 PM on Sunday at the conclusion of the festival, and then closing the sections of Bridge, Crockett, and Pearl for just that hour on Saturday for their annual parade.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Counsel, any comments? With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the closure of the streets for General Granberry's Birthday Celebration and Parade. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
We've got a tie here, we'll give that to Mr. Couch in a second.
Second, enjoy the cake.
Second, okay. We got a second by Mr. Parsons. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. And that is approved. With that, counsel, is there any... Wait, Mr. Couch, you got something else?
Just curious, when was the last time we had a council meeting with unanimous approval on every agenda item?
Oh, we've had them a lot. Thanks for bringing that up, yeah. David was there. With that, this council meeting is adjourned.
Way to go, Mayor.